Is that for me?
It's not for me.
Good evening and welcome to the Federal Way City Council Meeting for September 2nd of 2025. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone. Okay, so first, on the agenda, we have a presentation from Waste Management Annual Report. Han Kirkland is here and will give a brief presentation. We'll have about a five-minute presentation and open up for five minutes of questions to council. Han, great to see you.
Hello, Mayor Farrell, Council President Kochmar and council. Thank you for having me here to give you a quick review of the 2024 annual report. My name is Han Kirkland and I'm the Contract Manager with Waste Management. I have had the privilege of managing this contract for almost five years, so we are halfway through our contract with you and it has just flown by. So we have been proudly serving Federal Way for 35 years, providing garbage recycling and food and yard waste collection. We love to be in the Federal Way community and happy to support community events like the Red, White and Blues Festival, all the kid stuff, Touch a Truck, Kids' Day, Tricks and Treats. And last year, we donated a little over 34,000 in green food good grants to the three organizations nonprofits here, the Multi-Service Center, South King Tool Library, and the Goodwill. So diving into our operations for last year, which is kind of funky because we're almost three-quarters of a way done with this year, but last year, we ratified a new five-year contract with the Teamsters Local 174, and that's the union that represents our drivers. So we're securing our workforce through 2029, so that should give you peace of mind. And then in August of last year, King County closed their Algonah Transfer Station to modify some equipment there. That process continued through 2024 and added a bit of miles for our drivers, but the great part of that was that customers, businesses didn't really see an impact as we drove our loads to other King County facilities. And then in November, RDA, the major glass bottler manufacturer in Seattle, permanently closed its Seattle facility. And that facility was primarily user of glass for curbside recycling for programs in Puget Sound and across the state. But luckily, we had an exclusive contract with them, and so we were able to still deliver all of our curbside glass to Strategic Materials Incorporated, SMI, for processing. And they are looking to develop new customers and diversifying its end markets to recycle the glass. And also that month in November, we all remember the bomb cyclone. And so that was, we had that and the city designated it as a storm event, which is something the contract allows for, and that helped residents clean up yard debris. And if you subscribe to Yard Waste Service, you were able to put out extra units for two weeks following that declaration. And as part of our contract requirement, we report on the tonnage that we collect in the community. This is broken down by the line of business, so garbage, recycle, and organics, and the diversion rates by customer base. So the diversion rate is the amount of material that we keep out of the landfills, materials that are sent to a recycler or composting facility for processing, recycling, composting, reuse, and repurposing. So last year, we collected 64,649 tons of waste from residential multifamily and commercial customers. Overall, Federal Way diverted 27.3 of the waste material collected, which was a little bit down from 2023. But the good news is that we saw an increase in organics tonnage across all three sectors. And in our public education and outreach side of things, the Recycle Corps interns continued their work in the community with multifamily properties, commercial properties, and residential events. So we contacted 102 multifamily properties for contamination outreach and visited 25 multifamily properties to provide one-on-one technical assistance, conducted waste audits at 11 properties, and delivered over 3,300 reusable toter bags to make it easy for people to bring their recycle to the dumpsters. We contacted 32 commercial customers and 482 residential customers. We also had our recycle ride event at the South King Tool Library, and we were able to shred 4,500 pounds of paper, collect 15 cubic yards of foam, 1,400 pounds of textiles, and 600 pounds of appliances and electronics. And lastly, we teamed up with a local nonprofit Built to Lead at Thomas Jefferson to conduct a waste assessment of their cafeteria garbage. So this team gathered students who went through the cafeteria waste to see what can be recycled, what can be composted, and what should be thrown away. So students went away with a better understanding of how to recycle effectively. And in two weeks, no, three weeks, at the end of this month, our drivers will be delivering flyers for the annual food drive. Together with the mayor's office and the MSD, we'll be collecting donations curbside during the week of October 6th to the 10th. And last year, I had an opportunity to pick up donations with our route manager, so that was a lot of fun. Got my workout, for sure. But yeah, last year, we collected 9,485 tons of food in 2024, bringing our total since 2008 to 98.8 tons of food collected. So I'm excited to surpass 100 tons this year. So look for the flyers on your carts. The drivers will be delivering them the week of September 29th, and then we collect the following week. And as summer comes to a close, I'd like just to remind everyone to sign up for service alerts at WM Northwest forward slash Federal Way, or download the My WM app to manage your account, make payments, request services, view pickup schedules, and get alerts anytime your service is interrupted. So with that, thank you. I know this was a really fast presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Council, any questions? Han, thank you very much. Great job. All right. Okay, item B, Mayor's Emerging Issues in Report. And we'll have Ben go through this. Okay, we had recent, yeah, we have, these are the emerging issues in report. At the recent community events, we had the Federal Way Link Extension and the grand announcement that the Federal Way Link Extension will open up on December 6th here in Federal Way. The train's coming early. And so there's a lot of great regional press. You see a lot of the mayors there, and obviously, King County Councilman Pepin Reikbauer with a soccer ball signed by all the Sounders in honor of the FIFA Championships, which are coming up early next year. And I had an opportunity to say a few words, and the picture in the beginning was myself talking to King Five News about what a big deal this is going to be for our community. This is early, several months early from what had been planned as a spring, probably first quarter of next year. We're getting a preliminary indication that the press conference for the grand opening of the Federal Way Link Light Rail will occur at the Federal Way Station, but that's yet to be completely determined. So stay tuned, but it will open on December 6th. And so stay tuned for that and a major event. Next. There's the chief and I right there, right outside of front of City Hall on August 16th, where we had the Federal Way Police Department Gun Buyback Event. Chief, how would you say that went?
We didn't have the crowd that we had in the first gun buyback event, but we had a decent turnout. The people that came were very persuasive that they were able to get rid of guns they didn't want in their home. So I think the event was a success. We do have some funds left over from that event. It's a grant funding from Attorney General's Office, and we intend on, with their permission, doing another gun safe giveaway in the future this year.
All right, great. Thank you very much, and well-run by your folks. It was great to be there. Also, we had the, I think it was the third annual Back to School Free Haircuts Event, and Kristin Speekman was there with many stylists from around the area. Big thank you to Kristin and Bella Redd and all of the other stylists. It was a great day and started about noon. I think they had scheduled to go to about 7:00. It went for several hours. And did you get an exact count of haircuts, Ben?
I think it was just around 250. It was more than 250.
That's great. Well, this was her brainchild. A big thanks to the Parks Department for making sure that was a big success and feeding those stylists and everybody involved. And it was just a great community event. Great to see the kids lining up. And that was at Town Square Park, and the tent looked great. The venue looked great, and I really appreciate everybody showing up for that. Okay, next. We had the Ukrainian flag raising on August 23rd, 2025. It was their Independence Day. We see several council members there, Council Member Dovi, Council President Kochmar, Council Member Assefa Dawson, and myself, and our Speaker Vitale. It was a great event. A lot of folks, you know, came out. It was a Saturday morning, and we had an opportunity to see some people in the community and hear some remarks. Then, that same day, we had the Federal Way Lions Club Scholarship Car Show that was immediately adjacent and next to the Farmers Market behind the Commons Mall. Absolutely fantastic. You see me there taking a look at just a really beautiful car. It was an opportunity for a lot of really great cars. And a big thanks to the Lions for putting that all together, and they just did a phenomenal job. And I want to say thank you to all the sponsors and all the folks that made that happen. It's always fun to walk around and check out all these really cool cars. All right, next. There's me, right there with Amanda Miller, and the top picture, the Repair Cafe at South King Tool Library. Amanda and her team are doing a great job at that location. Also, just this past weekend, we had the Back to School Clothing Swap at South King Tool Library on August 30th. How many pounds of, you know, when they weighed the clothes?
I believe it was 1,300 pounds.
1,300 pounds of clothes given out to kids. Just a really great opportunity for parents to come in and, you know, get some special, you know, some special deals. And, you know, so big thanks to Amanda Miller and her team at the South King Tool Library. Okay, next. These are upcoming community events. We've got the Rain Fest. That's Sunday, September 14th. I believe that's going to be at Steel Lake, and that'll be at 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Then, we've got the Mending Fair at Federal Way Library. That's September 21st. That's 12:00 to 4:00 p.m. And then we've got the Taste of Federal Way at the Federal Way Farmers Market. That'll be on September 27th there at the Farmers Market, and it's usually a big event, 11:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Then, we've got the Community Emergency Response Team, or CERT, basic course begins on September 17th. And Kevin Pelley, our emergency manager, is working hard on that. It goes through November 12th. And so big thanks on that. And they're doing a lot to make sure that we, Kevin's doing a lot to make sure that we are prepared and our community is prepared in case of a major emergency. We've got the Bobtown Financial Literacy Classes to begin on September 25th, and those have been over at the Community Center. And they start on, like I said, September 25th and run through November 20th. They usually run 6:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. We've got the Grocery Food Drive that we're here a little bit about with our partners at Waste Management. Thank you, Han, and your drivers and the work you do. And that'll be on October 11th. And so that concludes my report. And now, the last, thank you, Ben. At the last city council meeting, we had promised those in attendance, pursuant to a question, about the repairs and the reconstruction of the Jack in the Box on Pacific Highway and 312. With that, Keith, you want to give a brief report on where we're at with the Jack in the Box?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Keith Nevin, Community Development Director. I'll do my best. So, all right, so back in October, it's been almost two years now, October 13th, 2023, at 1:13 in the morning, a car ended up in the Jack in the Box and caused the building to catch fire. And, you know, before the accident, here's an aerial photograph of the property on the top, and then the site plan that has come in for permit is located below. What I can tell you is, and this is a picture of what it looks like today. It's under construction. So when you kind of dissect, like, why has this taken two years? Because that seems like a long amount of time to rebuild something that is a fairly small structure. It took about nine months before a permit showed up at our door. And what we can assume from that time period, from October until July of 2024, is that the property owner was working things out with their insurance company. You know, what happens is you have to file a claim, the insurance company to do their investigations. And so what we can guess is that first nine months was basically was insurance claims and potential settlement. So in July of '24, we got a permit application, and that was then, that permit was issued by the city in October of '24. So in three months, we issued the permit for them to start rebuilding. So it's been now, let's see, we're in September. So it's been 11 months that this has been under construction. It is taking a long time. It is a small contractor out there working. But we had a conversation with him, with the super today, and they hope to have all the construction finished by October of this year and be open for business by November. So, you know, two years, probably a long time, but that's, you know, the city really can't push a property owner or contractor to move faster than they do. And so it is what it is, and we should see that hopefully finished in the next couple of months. And that's really all I have.
All right, council, any questions? Councilmember McDaniel.
Yeah, thanks for the update. I'll pass on to the residents that asked it. One of the questions I have real quick, though, is I'm trying to remember that. I know the car crashed, but was it like a DUI? Or what was going on with the vehicle that caused the crash?
Chief, do you remember the details on that?
Yes, it was a reckless driver that was eluding from a Washington State trooper. The trooper had disengaged pursuit long before the crash, but the suspects continued north, lost control of the intersection, and drove into the building.
That's it. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. I drive by that site quite often, and this is September, so they think they're going to be done in a month with that? Is that possible, in your opinion?
I think it's optimistic. I think that there's been some issues with inspections on the site. There's been some work done that needs to probably be redone. So my guys have been out there, working with the contractor, trying to help them through it. But it's possible. My guess is it's going to take a lot of work on their part, and they may need to mobilize some additional resources to make that timeline.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we've got Jason Gerwin, actually, John Hutton, our Parks Director at the Emergency Procurement Report, Performing Arts and Events Center PAC, a battery backup replacement. John?
Good evening, Mayor, Council President, City Council. I am standing in for Jason this evening. But back in February of '22, the PAC experienced major electrical failure during a Glenn Miller Orchestra performance. This cause was traced to a dead electrical leg from a transformer likely caused by water damage. For nearly three years, there were no further incidents. However, beginning in February of '25, the PAC has experienced multiple electrical disruptions impacting performance. In February, electrical issues disrupted a show, triggering a fire curtain and disabling control systems. Testing by Sequoia Electric and others found no active faults. AV systems were reset and restored. Again, in February, internal discussions identified the need for power metering on the switchgear to capture real-time data for future events, as intermittent issues are often difficult to diagnose. Another event caused AV and lighting failures late February with error codes on the backup batteries and intermittent voltage fluctuations. Sequoia Electric recommended a full building power down for comprehensive testing. PSE was contacted to inspect the transformer. And then on August 9th, the backup battery failure resulted in a temporary loss of theater lighting during a brownout. All of the current batteries are out of support, creating a critical reliability risk. So next steps, we need to expedite installation of power metering for better diagnostics, replace all of the failing and unsupported battery backup systems, and that's the reason I'm here to talk about emergency procurement. Continue coordination with PSE and Sequoia Electric to identify root causes and stabilize the PAC's electrical infrastructure. The good news is, is there's no new financial impact, as this is already included in this year's budget. And so I'm happy to answer any questions about the backup battery systems. And if I need to, I'll phone a friend, an EJ, who is very knowledgeable on it. I'm fairly knowledgeable, but I'm happy to help with any questions.
Councilmember McDaniel.
Yeah, my question is actually more, is this just an informational? Usually when I see this on there, there's usually a price tag included. But since this is part of the budget, is that just to give us a heads up?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, that was one of the questions. Thank you.
Okay, oh, Councilmember Walsh.
Yeah, just a quick question. The transformer that may be causing the problem, it's on the PSE side?
Yes, but PSE has identified no existing or ongoing problems with that transformer. We are continuing to work with them, as well as an electrical contractor, to try and find out. We're not sure it's the transformer. The first time it was, but that was all the way back in '22, and then we went almost three full years without another incident. And then in February, it started popping back up. And these battery backups, I'll take just a moment, think of a car battery, but a little bit larger, and there's over 100 of them. And they're upstairs, very high, so big batteries, and they have a four-year lifespan recommended. We're at about year eight, so it's time. And that's why it was included in the budget. But we wanted to get everything else taken care of. But with the battery backups, that was what, if we had a power outage of any kind in the city, that provides emergency lighting to allow people to leave the theater and the building safely. It lights all the emergency lighting for at least 20 minutes. That's on batteries that are performing correctly. We know that there's been at least one failed, and they're all four years past their lifespan.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. So if we know that they have a four-year lifespan and they're on year eight, why haven't we not replaced them up until this point?
Well, we were trying to identify what was going on with the electrical in the building. We knew that that's why it was included in the budget, to do it this year. We just hadn't gotten there quite yet. And now this, as we've continued to do our research on why these power outages happen, when we inspected the batteries, this time, a recent failure has appeared in at least one battery out of the 100.
So all of the batteries then will be replaced?
That's correct.
And when will that happen?
Very soon.
Before the busy season starts?
That's the hope, is to get them in there as quickly as possible.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you, John.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Okay, now we are on to Council Committee and Regional Committees' report. First, Land Use and Transportation, Councilmember Dovi.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next meeting for land use will be on the 8th, which is Monday, 5:00 in this room. We have a pretty long agenda since we missed or skipped August. That's my report.
All right, thank you. Parks and Public Safety, Councilmember Walsh.
All right. We also did not have an August meeting. Our next meeting will be right here, a week from today, September 9th. I would like to give kudos to the Parks Department for the great job with the haircut event. They did a wonderful job there, and it is appreciated by me and by the community. And that is my report.
All right. Finance and Economic Development, Councilmember Tran.
Thank you, Mayor. We did not meet in the month of August. Our next meeting is going to be on September 23rd in this room at 5:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, Councilmember Assefa Dawson.
Thank you, Mayor. We did not have a meeting either, so our next meeting is next Tuesday, September 9th at 2:00 p.m.
All right, thank you. Regional Commission Report, Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. This is from SCA. So last summer, at some point, the King County Council or the Transportation Benefit District, which are King County Council members, but it's a different board than the King County Council, had a proposal, TD 2025-02, which would impose a county-wide 10-year council-matic 0.1% sales and use tax for transportation improvements. Revenues would be shared with Metro and the Roads Services Division. The estimated impact to a median income household in the county would be of $40 per year. So when this came up, the Public Issues Committee for SCA had a number of discussions and ended up writing a letter to King County Council, asking them to hold off on this. And they did. They read the letter from SCA. It came from the Public Issues Committee and the SCA Board. And next week, I will be part of a small group of council members who will be talking with King County Councilmember Sarah Perry, as she is one of the authors of this resolution. And we'll be talking about the proposal that she has and why the 38 cities that make up SCA are not in favor of this. And there was a letter that was written, and I believe I had it sent out to all of council members. If you didn't get it, I can send it out again as to what our concerns were. But what I'm asking for, if any of you have any concerns that you'd like me to bring up to Councilmember Perry when we speak with her, please let me know. And this is going, at some point, it will be going before the King County Council for a discussion and potential vote. SCA is also doing a lunch and learn on October 2nd from 12:00 to 1:00 on the opioid settlement funds. You have to pre-register. We have the upcoming PIC meeting next week. It is in person next Wednesday from 7:00 to 9:00. It's in person at Mercer Island Community Center, if anybody wants to go. And September 19th, I will chair the Joint Regional Transportation Board Meeting in Seattle. There are three regional transportation boards in King County. Metro oversees us. I'm Chair of Skateboard, which is the South County Board. And once a year, we have a joint meeting, and this year, it's my turn to chair the meeting. We will be discussing transportation issues for the soccer tournament that's coming up in a year. And if any council members want to go with me, I would love for you to go with me. It's September 19th from 10:00 to 12:00 up in Seattle. And our senior commission has been really busy, so I'd like to talk about a couple of things that they're doing. First of all, thank you very much to the council and the mayor for the vouchers. On Saturday, I have promised our Farmers Market staff that I will help hand out vouchers and... Our farmers market staff that I will help hand out vouchers. And on Saturday, we handed out 60 Vouchers in 40 minutes. And then we had about 15 to 20 people come up after that asking for vouchers. People are very grateful and thankful for the $10 vouchers. So I would like to thank all the council And the mayor for their work on that and staff. The Senior Commission has a program called Santa For Seniors. It's our first year that we've done this program. We're working with an organization Out of Tacoma. If you would like to nominate a senior who is alone at Christmas and perhaps could Use some gifts, could you, you can nominate them through Amy Glendon in our office. And we would be Glad to take their names and put their names in to receive some gifts. We also have our Senior Reading Program. This is the second year. One of our commissioners last year thought it would be Really cool to get seniors and students together. And so there's about 30 folks who signed up last Year. And they go into the elementary school of their choice, and they read for one day, two days, However many days they want to read for, you know, 20, 30, 40 minutes, whatever. And it's been really Popular. If you're interested, you don't have to be a senior. We're just trying to connect the Community with the schools. And the teachers always appreciate people coming in and reading. The kids love it. I've done it. The kids are so cute. They really like it. And you get more out Of it than the kids do, I guarantee you. So if you're interested, once again, contact Amy. She will Get you the forms that you need to sign up with. You do have to get clearance through the school District. We don't, we're not able to give you that clearance, but it's an easy thing to do. And the Senior Commission Connection Luncheon is on September 17th from 11:30 to 1:00 PM at The Community Center. It's a free light lunch that's provided, and we look forward to seeing you There. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Council President Report?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Of all the things that we've already talked about, when there's been, Oh my goodness, I can't remember 10 to 15 events that are going on in our city. We do have a shred Event that you may be interested in at the PAC. That'll be on September the 13th. Also, on September 13th, there's going to be a 10th anniversary healing concert. Also, that'll be at 5:00 PM. So you might want to check out the Fedway Mirror to get some information on what that might be. We're going to have two ribbon cuttings, which might be interesting for you. One's going to be At Veg ER, which I believe is pet for pets.
Yeah, it's a veterinary emergency group, ER.
That'll be on September the 18th at 11:30, right over by Safeway, off of 320th and PAC Highway. And then there's going to be another ribbon cutting for something called Island Pacific Supermarket, which is fish. And that'll be on September the 26th. So some interesting things Coming up in your community. And so you're going to have to check out the mirror to keep track of All of these events. And thank you. I can see the mirror sitting in our audience. So we're going To have a lot of events coming up. So if you can make any of them, be sure to do so.
All right, thank you. Now it's time to the most important part of the evening, a public comment. You've got three minutes unless you're accompanied by five individuals who are present. Also, please Let us know the community you live in. We don't need your address. And green means go. Yellow means You've got 30 seconds. Red means please stop. Okay, let's go ahead and I'll call off the first few. Susan Strong, Nathan Orth, Mike Bolich-Ziegler.
Mayor Farrell, Council President Coachmar, Council Members. I'm Susan Strong, and I've lived In Fedway since 1975. The Ethiopian Sports Federation of North America hosted the annual Sporting and Cultural Fest in Fedway from June 28th to July 5th of this year. The total number Of attendees was equal to around half the population of the city of Fedway, with an estimated attendance Of 40,000 to 50,000 guests. The event brought people from all over the United States, Canada, And beyond to cheer on the soccer players and connect with Ethiopian culture and community. I quote a statement in the Fedway Mirror, quote, "At the Fedway Council Meeting on July 1st, Councilmember Susan Honda celebrated the tournament but spoke to wishing the city had Done a better job welcoming people." Quote, "I'm a little disappointed that the city of Fedway Hasn't gone all out to welcome this event to our city," Honda said. "In hindsight," she said, "She wishes the city had installed banners welcoming the city and that the city would have Let the businesses know that this was coming," unquote. One of the businesses affected by this Event was Campion Market, and my husband and I work a lot with them. And the security guy over There, he was talking to us, and he said shortly after this event began, he described what he Encountered at his story. He comes in, and there was no parking, and he's got a huge parking lot. His customers couldn't even come in. So somehow he figured out that there was an event down the Street at Fedway High School, which is at 308th, and he's at 312th. So he put up cardboard signs That said, "No event parking," and that cleared his parking lot. So the city of Fedway has a long History of not enough parking for local facilities. Some of the facilities with not enough parking Are the Warehouser King County Aquatic Center. If you've ever seen that, it's, I'm glad I don't Live near that. And then the Performing Arts Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Nathan Orth?
Hello, everyone. My name is Nathan Orth. I've been a resident of Fedway for eight years. With the passage of the middle housing zoning bill recently, I wanted to come here tonight to Encourage the city to try and find more ways to positively impact new home building inside The city. I recently read on the Fedway Permit Center page that construction permits are sitting At an average review period of 102 days, and that feels like too long. Obviously, there's a lot That goes into that process, but surely there's some, something that we can find in there to trim That down so that people are not waiting almost four months for a permit. Seattle recently received An executive order to begin using AI in its permitting process to cut down on their wait times. And I'm curious if that's something that the city of Fedway would investigate, if it would work For us or not. I believe that this could help stabilize housing prices, which have been ballooning For decades, right? So I believe it would help with that. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, Mike Bolich-Ziegler. Bolich?
Good evening, Mayor, Council President, Council Members. My name is Mike Bolich-Ziegler. I live In the Twin Lakes neighborhood. I'm here to talk about two pedestrian safety concerns in the city. The first is, I think it's great that we've installed about half a dozen of the flashing beacon Signals throughout the city over the summer and earlier this year. What's not great is, I believe None of them are currently working yet. There is one that was installed earlier this year at Southwest Dash Point in Southwest 312th Street. It was before March, and I don't think that one is working. It's been covered up with some black plastic. And I think the one over 320th near Pacific Highway Is in a similar state. So I'd be curious if the city could provide an update on when those are Going to be operational and what the delay is, because it's been quite a few months to have this Freight infrastructure and not have it be usable. The second is, I live in Twin Lakes. My son attends Olympic VU K through 8. Along 26th Avenue South, just south of the school, there's a small curb Along the street that creates a sort of pedestrian walkway for families, other people to walk up and Down the street more safely. What's frustrating is cars will often park in that pedestrian walkway, Which forces families, kids to go into the active traffic way. Dozens of kids from Olympic View, Decatur High School, and just throughout the community use that, that street. I've submitted More than a dozen of the C Click Fix requests to try and get some traffic enforcement. Usually, It's about a day, if not a week plus, before it gets any sort of enforcement or visit, which is, By that time, the car is gone. I've reached out to our traffic department to try and see what can Be done in terms of, you know, signs, flexible posts, something to try and dissuade this behavior. I'm worried that it's going to take, you know, a kid getting hurt or worse along that street. And Really, you know, my son, we walk to school. He rides his bike. If I have a stroller, I have to go Back, backtrack and go around where the car is parked. And so I'm hoping that someone in the city Can take a little bit of ownership, see what can be done, get creative to make sure this little hump Is usable for a sidewalk. There's not a lot of sidewalks in my part of Twin Lakes. And so this Little hump does a lot, and I'd like to protect it and hopefully make it safer for kids to get to And from school. Thank you.
All right, thank you. EJ, do you have a report on what's up with these sidewalks, with these crosswalks?
Yeah, so there's two different projects that were named. The one on 320th, we have defaulted The contractor and turned that over to the bonding company for them to complete at this point. They Are obligated to have it completed by, I believe it's November 15th for the 320th crossing. The other One is a different project of the, I think there were 10 initially. There are four of them that are Still being worked on based on part availability. So we're waiting on specific components to come In. They're all supposed to be wrapped up by the end of the year.
Okay. Chief, can you talk about traffic enforcement?
Sure. Commander Hodge is in the back of the room, and he oversees the traffic unit. So I'll have Commander Hodge talk with the speaker. And then we'll take a look at what parking enforcement is Needed, and then we'll work with the traffic engineers if there's ways we can add some signage In that area. But we'll work together. We'll take a look at it. But Commander Hodge will get the Exact location. We'll go take a look at it.
All right, all right, thank you very much. Okay, Willie Smith?
I'm going to withdraw because I got my question answered earlier, so thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, Juan Juarez Ramos. While he's making his way, we'll have Ben Hyderken and Roger Magnuson and Anna Patrick make their Way over. Juan?
Thank you, Mayor Farrell, Council President Coachmar, members of the council. It's great seeing You guys again. It's also September 2nd, so that means it's the first day of the new year of school. Today, I want to talk about a recent construction that happened in 3, 28, sorry, South 288th Street And Military Road South, where over the years, over by the Walgreens, is Safeway towards Thomas Jefferson High School, the best high school there is in the entire state of Washington. I'm sorry. It's always been a two-lane go through Military Road. But now, they recently changed it to now One lane. If you're on the far right lane, you have to, you must turn a right towards Steel Lake. Despite there being three signs saying you must take a right turn, cars are ignoring it, and they Proceed, keep going straight. I myself personally almost got into three car accidents because cars Did not know that they had to take a right turn. Instead, they're going straight towards me in a Narrow road, and I had to start blasting my honking car. Now, I may have, I do take guilt. I do hit Curves. I do hit some stuff, because first car means obviously there have been damages. But this Was my first time I say, "It's not my fault." So I know there's three signs. If there's any way The city could look into it more to fix that situation so that, to prevent even more accidents Possibly. It's, again, it's by the Walgreens towards Thomas Jefferson High School, where someone From Waste Management said that they're working with TJ. Of course, they're working with TJ, because, Like I said, TJ is the best school there is. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Juan. EJ, you want to talk about what's going on at that location?
Yeah, so that's the Road Diet Project. There is advanced signage up there. I will connect with Commander Hodge in the back after this and request some support.
Okay, great, thank you. Ben Hyderken?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. My name is Ben Hyderken. I've lived in Fedway For just about 20 years now. I'm here tonight to talk about a feral cat problem that we're having In our neighborhood. We've kind of live on the edge of the city and rural, and we have several Apartment buildings around us. And over the years, there have been just more and more cats showing Up. Myself and another neighbor have this year caught 12 cats and gotten them fixed at a rescue. And then they clipped their ear and released them back in the neighborhood. But they stick around And get fed, you know, quite a bit. But I was bringing this up because I was hoping that maybe There was something that the council or the city could do to reach out to the apartment complexes In the area and see how their tenants are doing with the animals that they have. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ben. I believe you've emailed and actually with pictures before. And is This something that, Chief, didn't I ask you about this just recently, about what was going on With the feral cat situation?
I must have been on vacation, Mayor.
Yeah. I think we've forwarded to an acting, an acting chief, Animal Control. Would you connect With Animal Control and make sure we connect with Ben here and follow back up, but next steps?
Sure.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, Roger Magnuson?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. We've always enjoyed the farmers market, and it's been open To everybody. And we've just, we've encountered some of you folks and just enjoy the time. Well, My last visit, I imagine my surprise was as I was leaving, there was a table being set up. And Around, it was about 12, 1 o'clock. And I was just taken aback because there was a table that was Proposing anti-Semitism. It was talking about, they want to talk about the Palestinians or Gaza, And all this other stuff. And I says, "Are you serious?" You know, of course, I had countered him. And I won't go into the whole discussion I had with him. But simply, my hope and my request to You guys is the fact that you do not give permission for this type of entity to be established into The farmers market. And I know that applications are made, but there ought to be something from The standpoint of, it can't be political and so forth and so on. And this is a terrible, terrible Organization. It has no place in Fedway, much less this farmers market. And if they want to espouse That kind of stuff, there's other places and venues they could do so. But the farmers market is Not the place for something like that. And so that was my, that's my desire, that you would set Up a requirement and make it known that we cannot allow terrorist organizations or anything like That to be set up at the farmers market. And I don't want to, I mean, I can go into a whole bunch Of other things, information-wise and historical stuff and everything else. But the point is that It doesn't belong here. It does not belong here in Fedway, and it doesn't belong at the farmers Market. And I would certainly hope that you guys would take steps to make sure that it doesn't Happen again. Okay, thank you very much.
Sir, I think you're talking about the Kashama Sawant Congressional Campaign, as someone who's Running, thank you for your comments. Ryan, can you comment on that? We've regarded freedom of Speech in this country and in the city?
Historically, the market was not a government-run enterprise. It was privately owned and privately Run. And a part of that is that the people who own it and run it can decide who gets to speak And who doesn't get to speak. The government doesn't have that luxury. So just as you, sir, Were able to get up and make your public comments today, in a public sphere, generally speaking, Especially a congressional candidate that's running for office can campaign in public spaces. So that's what we saw. And the city doesn't have any plans on curbing political speech at this point.
There's at least one other campaign that was actively campaigning at the market that day. So It's America. It's freedom of speech. Anna Patrick?
Well, let me just speak to that. So I did go to the market, and I saw she who shall not be Named at the market. And I think it was the only booth. And they actually had a booth set up. And There's nothing on your website that says that we can set up a booth for political reasons. And It also says that you may not distribute flyers. So there were flyers being distributed from the booth. I will suggest that it be placed on the website, stated clearly that political booths are allowed, What the rules are. Are we going to be allowing megaphones? And if we're going to invite and have All kinds of folks coming out with very strong opinions, then I think I might have a few that I'd Like to invite, too. So, I mean, we want to counter those opinions, right? So, but it's going To change the whole climate of the market. So, but it's going to change the whole climate of the market, so I think we should have some rules. What's allowed, what's not allowed, within the boundaries of a public market, and you might kind of lose some vendors and customers depending on how it goes. So I hope there's some thought into that. And, you know, I did go up to the table and had a conversation with that booth. You know, yes, in the past, our group was not allowed to have political voices at the market, even though we're less extreme in my opinion. But we, you know, I was just really shocked and upset to see this, and having not been announced or invited or allowed made clear to the public that this is something that was allowed, especially during this time of the season. And so I did have a conversation, and I was ushered off when my opinion wasn't agreed with, and it was really nothing extreme. It was, you know, I think that you, they want to bring tax-exempt, more tax-exempt housing to Federal Way, and I said, well, you should look at the data, because we have the highest number of tax-exempt housing units in Federal Way. I gave Devco as an example of how the system is gamed. We have 100% tax-exempt housing in our projects, while other cities have the bare minimum required for tax exemptions. And then I suggested they take their table to another east-side city and have that conversation, and try to bring some housing there as they are planning to do. So, you know, if we are going to bring these things to the market, we should be able to express our opinions at those tables, too. So if they're going to be ushering people away because of their freedom of speech, that should be considered as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Dara Mandeville.
You didn't give me a heads up. Good evening. Now I feel like I'm beating a dead horse, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention that one of my neighbors actually approached me after the market. Their little boy, he's five, he just started kindergarten at Brigadoon today, as a matter of fact. He had an American flag t-shirt on, and these people that were speaking of actually approached him as they were walking around the market and made a comment about his proud-to-be-American or proud, whatever it said shirt on. So I have personally tried in the years past, and I understand Rose, and it was private and all of those things, I have personally tried to get our, you know, nonpartisan PAC in to inform the citizens, and I have been told no several times, and I just keep trying. So I wasn't aware that there's a change. I'm just concerned with the direction that this could go. So I understand freedom of speech, I'm very proud that we have that ability, but if we could put some boundaries on it, because attacking a five-year-old because they're wearing red, white, and blue is absolutely unacceptable. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, that concludes public comment. Thank you very much. We'll make sure the website accurately reflects an equal access or platform for folks, and we're certainly not going to allow, if anybody sees any behavior that falls below a standard of being polite, let us know, and we'll address that. Item six is...
Mayor, so are we going to have, because we're really talking about policy changes or policy, new policy or policies, are we going to have some discussion on that?
Well, Ryan?
Because we don't want to have fights at the market, but we want to have people...
Well, seems awfully speculative right now. I think it's absolutely a ripe topic for council to talk about and to legislate on, but I'm not sure exactly what's going on there right now. So we've heard some reports of people that didn't like the messages that were being seen, and one person that says that there was a child that was accosted, that's clearly unacceptable. That's against the current rules of the market. I do believe that this is one of the growing pains of the market going public, being run by the government instead of a private entity. So my advice would be to give it a little bit of time and see how bad it is before we take action.
And so do you think that maybe this is something that should go to one of our committees to have a discussion, at least on it?
I don't think a committee is going to be able to formulate policy that's consistent with the law, so...
I mean, a commission, I said committee, I meant commission. Parks Commission.
Even worse.
Well, we can't regulate content of speech, so we couldn't...
But we can regulate behavior.
So there are options that if there is a problem that we can, that we can take action to, to make it cordial and not shut down the market. We don't have to sacrifice the market on the altar for...
No, I'm just saying, I don't want this to...
I don't believe that this is appropriate to start from a commission level. It would be something that would be staff-driven and then brought to council for policy.
If somebody is causing a disruption, we do have the authority to remove them from the market.
Absolutely, and this is a new thing that we're all coming to grips with. I do think that megaphones were brought up. Clearly, we can't have people using megaphones in a public space like that to speak over other people or hounding people that aren't interested in talking to them. So those are not, we can create rules that apply to everyone equally, but what we can't do is just shut down all speech.
Sure. I just wanted to make sure that we had some kind of a future discussion on this whole issue, because...
And if council wants to take action, I think this would be a great thing for staff to work out, some proposals for council to take action on.
Thank you.
All right, we'll talk about that tomorrow. Councilor McDaniel?
Yeah, my question is, is if some situation like that currently happens where we do have someone who needs to be escorted out, or we have some kind of conflict, do we currently have any procedures in place right now where like law enforcement, somebody's there that they can go talk to to have that situation dealt with, or is that something we'll be adding to the conversation in the future?
Where's Bill? Bill Vidino, Policy Advisor.
The answer is anticipating this, and the other candidates that have been campaigning there, we're ready to roll if we need to bring, you know, the police in for whatever, so...
So something we could probably add to the conversation at that point?
Oh, yeah, and we'll make sure it's more specific, but, you know, I was watching it as well, too. So I was there.
Okay, appreciate it.
All right. Okay, Councilor Walsh, I think that's where we're doing it.
Yeah, I was just going to ask, I mean, are we working on having an officer in close proximity on Saturday morning, or Saturdays during the market? That was, that was my question, go ahead and ride along with that.
I would say if there's any indication there's going to be problem, if we're notified, certainly, we can be present, you know, be highly visible, but I think we just, depending on what information's coming in, if there's no activity, then there's no need for us to be there. But if there's going to be potential problem, disorderly conduct, some other law violation, sure, we want to be there to make sure nothing happens.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Doherty?
Just a question, you know, being that the city now runs the market and owns it, this is a whole new dilemma that never was in the market before, so, you know, we have to probably think about it. But I was wondering, during campaign seasons and things like that, because you got to have, you know, the ambiance of the market is very, very important. Can you kind of petition or partition and say, this part of the market, if you're a political, you can have a booth over here, and then the rest of the market doesn't get affected by people that might abuse the right to go tackle people in the hallway and talk about things? We want freedom of speech, we want to have all the ideas, but maybe like they've done in the past where they have the flea market, part of the market on this side, and the rest of the market on the other side, and there's some sort of division, and it looks like it's a little more planned than having a political or a couple of political things in the middle. So I just throw that out for thought.
I think that's a good idea, I'd have thought that through. Okay, thank you. Okay, all right, item six, 6A, Purdue and eight generic opioid manufacturer settlements. Ryan, call. Oh, I'm sorry. Before we get to, Ryan, as you make your way over, we've got one item, Consent Agenda, item A, minutes for the August 12, 2025, City Council Regular Meeting, and Council President Kochmar, do you have a motion?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I move approval of the Consent Agenda, item A.
Second.
It's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Commander passed unanimously. All right, item six, the Council Business, 6A, Purdue and eight generic opioid manufacturer settlements.
Good evening, Mayor, Council President and members of council. I'm here to present another opioid lawsuit settlement proposal brought to us by the Washington State Attorney General Office. So by way of background, the Washington State AG office has been negotiating settlements on behalf of the state, the entire state. And even though we are not parties to these lawsuits, we can be the beneficiaries of these settlements by basically foregoing our right to sue and settling in conjunction with all the other cities per the negotiation. The state is seeking local government buy-in on nine separate settlements tonight. They are one case against the Purdue and Sackler family, which is valued at $105.6 million, payable over 15 years, and then eight other lawsuits that are smaller against the generic drug manufacturers for a total amount of $16.7 million. In order for any of the cities and the state to benefit from this negotiation and settlement, all the eligible counties and cities of the state must join in. If we do that, then the cut of just this one portion of the settlements for local government would be $61.1 million. Once again, we've talked about this in other contexts, and this is the same as previous settlements. The distribution of these funds is controlled by what's called the One Washington MOU. It's an inter-local agreement where we have agreed to use the funds only to mitigate the effects of the opioid crisis as are described in this document. Also, the document outlines how the funds are distributed, so 50% of the funds go to local government and 50% go to the state, and that 50% that goes to local government is further split up by this pretty elaborate weighted percentage scheme that they came up with that's meant to capture the amount of effort and impact opioid crisis had on a particular municipality. So whether or not it's accurate or not, that's kind of a ship gone by. We've agreed to this percentage when we joined in, and it is that very long percentage, 0.306% of the 50%. So if you apply that math, and I do apologize, the staff report, I sent you an email earlier today, I had the wrong number, I forgot to take the 50% off the top, so it's twice as much as it should have been. So the actual number that the city will receive for just these nine lawsuits would be $187,000 over 15 years. The AG's office also included in the current packet of materials an ongoing total where they calculate that the local governments of the state, for all opioid settlements, including these nine, would be $578 million, and Federal Way's portion will be about $1.7 million over 15 years. This isn't really part of it, but just by way of refresher, because we do talk about this often when this topic comes up, the approved uses for, the opioid uses are broken down into these basic categories of treatment, direct treatment of opioid use disorder, prevention of people getting this disorder, and then other strategies, which are basically training first responders on how to deal with people who are suffering from drug addiction, and training local officials on how to better handle this money, and then also researching opioid abatement. So those are the very general categories. They're very enumerated. If you look at the contract, there's probably 10 or 15 pages that lay out these categories. So if you, the mayor's recommendation is to join all the other eligible municipalities to execute the proposed settlements. As I stated before, this is an all-or-nothing proposition, so if council doesn't join in this, then it's not just saying no for us, it's saying no for basically all the municipalities of the state. So no pressure. Any questions?
Councilor Sebadoz.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So when they say training under other strategies, training for first responders, is there a percentage, so this, the whole fund does not get used on training and not direct service?
No, it's up to council, it's up to council on how to appropriate this money.
So we could actually decide to just go all to training and no direct service?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Councilor McDaniel?
Yeah, my first question is, you said it's an all-or-nothing, how many other cities or municipalities are included in this conversation right now?
It's statewide, so I don't know entirely. It's not every city, it's only those that are eligible. I believe there's a population cutoff, so I have the King County cities listed in my staff report, and it looks to be about 20. So Auburn, Bellevue, Bothell, Burien, Covington, Des Moines, Enham, Claw, Federal Way, Issaquah, Kenmore, Kent, Kirkland, Lake Forest Park, Maple Valley, Mercer Island, Newcastle, Redmond, Renton, Sammamish, Sea Tax, Seattle Shoreline, Snoqualmie, Toquilla, and Woodinville.
Has any of those guys signed off on this yet, or are we even the first ones?
Everybody is in the process of signing off on it.
So it's pretty much the same timeframe for everybody at the moment?
It depends on when council meetings hit and whether or not, some councils, I think, have delegated this already to the executives, so they don't have to keep talking about it.
Gotcha.
But we have not done that.
Gotcha, and so we're looking at 100, roughly 190 over the next 15 years for 1.1, 1.2-ish?
It's correct. It'll add to the pile. The total pile for all of these settlements, not just these nine, including past ones, has been, this is the third time I think we've done this, is 1.7 million.
Okay, so, because I know we had have this conversation a couple of times.
Yeah.
I guess my last question is, I don't have a problem with this one, is when we had the last question last time, it was about extending or changing the One Washington or whatever the MOU is. Do we have any more updates on that particular conversation?
So, yes and no. They're still talking about, I think that people have opinions about it, and it's since changed. It was on the agenda for tonight, and we pulled it because I was asked by them to pull it because they don't have consensus. So I'm not sure what they're actually asking for yet.
Okay.
So if they ever decide what they're actually going to ask for, I will bring it back to you.
Okay, and then we also asked some questions about understanding more of their expenses and stuff like that. Is that something that we need to wait on them, too, for?
I was going to do it all at once.
Okay.
But, yeah, I did research that a little bit, and I asked them directly, and they did give me most of the information that you asked about.
Okay, sweet, I'll check in with that one.
And I can send it to you just offline, but I was going to present it when we actually brought the topic back up.
Okay, just because I don't know when it's going to be up, if you don't mind sending it off, I'll take a look at it.
Okay.
Appreciate it, thank you.
All right. Council President Kochmar?
Are you going to be making recommendations to council as to how the money should be used then?
I will not be, but staff will.
But staff will be at some point?
Yes.
But we're not sure when or how.
Well, it's with the Human Services Division of the Community Development Department, and I think we've been waiting for it to be enough money to matter. It's started to accumulate to enough that we can actually spend it on something. It didn't come in all at once, it's been coming in erratic schedule.
So will some of this money be able to be used for the purchase of Narcan?
Yeah, it should be.
So if you have training, I would assume that the trainers, trainees would then be trained on how to use Narcan?
If council, yeah, if that's what we wanted to spend the money on.
I've had somebody in the past ask if there was a way that they could get Narcan from the city to have it on hand for their business or whatever. Is that a possibility?
Yes.
So those would be interesting to talk about. Thank you.
I do have a motion, Council President.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I move approval of the proposed settlements.
Second.
It's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Commander passed unanimously. All right, item B, Washington State Administrative Office of the Courts Grant Acceptance and Interagency Agreement. Judge Dave Larson will present, the presiding judge of our municipal court.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. First of all, I want to give you a compliment. I just was, had to have some engagements with a different city where I had to attend their council meetings, and they had public comment, and the council and the mayor were very direct about not responding to anything, basically shut their citizens down. And just as I'm sitting here, appreciate the fact that you guys actually engage people as they come up and speak of their issues in the city. So it's something that the people here need to be proud of, that that happens, because it looks, the optics in the other city, the show, go unnamed, is not, wasn't good. Anyway, I'm here tonight, this is our, last year for me of coming before you to seek approval of the grant. We've now, I think it's our fifth year that we've received money from the state legislature from through the Administrative Office of the Courts to run our therapeutic courts program. We've been quite successful. I won't go into great detail why, but our, we got cut by $90,000 this year, and so we had to cut back. The impacts are that the, we had the Resource Center at the library, we partnered with the Federal Way Public Library System, and we had a resource there, the center there, the first and third Thursdays of each month. The impacts are that the, we had the Resource Center at the library, we partnered with the library, Federway Public Library System, and we had a resource there, the center there, the first and third Thursdays of each month. And the beauty of that is our community court ran there too, so we could send people from the court for services, and he kind of one-stop shopping for folks to be able to deal with any any number of issues they had. And also, we were able to leverage the ability to use the library's peer navigator, including our peer navigator. So it was a great arrangement, but because of the cuts, we had, we don't no longer have the ability to coordinate that. So we had, we're moving, and then we're moving community court back to the courthouse, so it'll no longer be at the library with that. But this money's used to fund our embedded peer navigator. We're the first first court in the state to have embedded peer navigators, and it's really useful for folks. And and so it's, there's some frustrations associated with the cuts and with the reasons for them, but I won't share those. I just asked for your approval this evening for that, so we can proceed into this next fiscal year.
All right. Any questions? Councilwoman McDaniel?
Yeah, my first question is, how many peer navigators will we have? Is this for one, or we have two?
We have one peer navigator. With, what happened is we had 1.6 peer navigators plus 0.4 for the community court coordinator. Part of that is because Des Moines decided, Administrative Office of the Courts came up with an opinion that they could only use peer navigators within the confines of their DUI court, which is only four hours a month. So it was a joint grant, and they cut their peer navigators from 24 hours a week to four hours a month, which allowed us to then take that extra 0.6 and use it here in our court.
And what would the financial number need to be in order to go back to the library, the courts?
Well, the, it's about $80,000 is what we have to put out for a peer navigator. So if you can imagine, the the coordinate, community court and Resource Center coordinators, a point, we had a point four FTE, so it'd be whatever point four, 32,000. We were also having difficulties because even though we've tried to coordinate, other courts and other cities were running resource centers at the same time we were. And so we were in the process of discussing how we can do these together using Zoom and those type of things. So there was other issues associated with the Resource Center, Department of Licensing, for instance, cut their funding, so they couldn't have folks there. And so there was, there were other issues too that that bid into the effectiveness of it, but it was overall a good deal.
So money excluded with that program, do you think that program, you mentioned, what kind of benefits did that program provide? Did you have more?
I'll give you an example, so if somebody comes to our community court and they're in need of treatment, our peer navigators can take them out in the Resource Center and send them up for treatment before they leave court. Whereas if, when we're back here, we don't have that, we have to rely on them being hooked up at some point after, you know, hopefully they'll show up, et cetera. The best, one of the best stories in terms of how this works is we, this gentleman was there at the community court, and he was, you could tell he was hurting for a fix, and he was three days away from inpatient treatment. And five years ago, he would have never showed up, right? But because we were there, peer navigator came in, lined up with him, walked him through, got him through the those three days, got him in inpatient treatment, he was success successfully completed it. Because we're able to act immediately, we don't have to wait, we don't have to refer people out. And the Resource Center, again, there's different things that are available. The fact that somebody can go and deal with a number of issues all at once, instead of having to hunt down somebody helping with their health insurance, and somebody helping with their employment, somebody helping with their housing, really served a great benefit.
And that sounds like, even with the money, it sounds like some other things have caused that, so it's not a possibility?
Yeah, what happened over time is because there was a great amount of involvement at first, and then I think we probably could have done a better job of marketing together with the library, the city, the library, and and the court itself to market it to different places, because it was open to the general public, it wasn't just restricted to people from court. And I think that over time, the amount of people that came and needed it, and then it, then as a result, some of the folks that were showing up, it wasn't, they couldn't justify it because not as many people were showing up.
Gotcha.
To the Resource Center. So that's part of the problem, too. It wasn't just because we lost.
Gotcha. I appreciate it, thank you.
And and some of the resources are going to come to the courthouse and when we're here. And so, but it won't be as robust.
All right, my, I guess my last question would be, with that model, do you think that model should maybe be resurrected in the future with some tweaks to it?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I think, well, anything that gets people, you got to hit while Aaron's hot, because if you don't, they're going to, it's very, put it this way, it's extremely difficult for people to engage in services, and a lot of the people that live in the woods right now have given up because it's too complicated, it's too fragmented, it's too disorganized. And what the what the peer navigators do in this system, with in conjunction with organizing it, is they become kind of the, what we call care traffic controller, in the sense that they help people navigate, where the traditional system, we kick them to the curb and say, do all this stuff or we'll punish you, and they're lost. They can't, they're not thinking five seconds in front of their face, and we're making them do all this stuff and ultimately punish them. So it's, we've helped thousands of people this way. And in our court, we have barrier-free access to peer navigators, so if a family member comes in, somebody, and they need peer navigation services, they can, they can access it, and they'll set them up. And they have a network of things that they they deal with, and it's all confidential, too, so people can be more candid and honest about what their issues are, instead of having to be enforced in open court to tell some judge, or tell their attorney, or tell a prosecutor that they're having issues.
No, I like the program, it's just a bummer we weren't able to keep it going.
Well, while the peer navigation system is, that part of it's going to continue, we just will have less people to do it, because we meet people, every every arraignment, when people come into court, the arraignment's the first time they're in court, there's a peer navigator that talks to them, that interacts with them. And when I spoke at Drug Court Conference about three years ago on this concept, they said, are you willing to, I told judges and lawyers and anybody that was there, are you willing to live with the success you'll never know about? Because I'll never know whether those folks were successful. But that's the point, is that we just want people to be successful, we don't want the credit for it.
No, I got it. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Sephardosson?
Yeah, since you said this was going to be your last presentation, I just wanted to say thank you for your compassion and for your care and passion for this project. And I believe Susan and I have been to your court and I and observed how you handle, because sometimes it's a scary situation people are in, just how you try to make them comfortable, and how the peer navigators also support them is just incredible. So hopefully, like Paul said, you're right, you don't know the success, but even if it impacts or changes one's life, that's a change.
I appreciate that.
So I just want to say thank you.
Yeah, it's it's been, it's been a kind of a, kind of a baby of mine as as this developed, and the more and more courts are doing it, and we're we're going to see it, I think, eventually, to be kind of, kind of almost, it's like, have we done this all forever, kind of deal? Because in the recovery community outside of the court system, it's just, it's just thought of as really the only way. And again, it gets rid of the fragmentation, well, it doesn't get rid of it, it it remedies the fragmentation a little bit.
All right. Thank you. Council President, do you have a motion?
Yes, thank you very much, Councilmember Sephardosson, for bringing up the thank you to our Judge Larson. And I wanted to say the same thing, thank you for all of your work. You are our second municipal court judge, correct?
I think third, well, second elected, actually, when you count, I was the fourth, because there was a part-time judge, and then elected, and then another elected, then I took over for her, so I'm really the fourth.
Okay.
And it's 25 years this year since you started a municipal court federally.
Right.
Yeah.
So, and I want to bring up the fact that if you look behind Judge Larson, you will see the Declaration of Independence, and that was gifted to the city by Judge Larson.
Well, by the Kiwanis Club.
Well, your, well, your idea, thank you.
Yeah. Well, it's the Constitution, the Bill of Rights, and the Declaration of Independence.
Correct. And the first letters in the preamble to the Constitution says, "We, the people." And I always liked that, "we, the people" means that government is there to serve the people, not the other way around.
Exactly. Yeah, and that's the, yeah, that's the ethic that we operate from.
Right, yeah, thank you very much. And so it's kind of important to remember all that, when next year is going to be our 250th year anniversary, since we were declared independent from.
Yeah. Well, so for the people that don't, I don't have a terminal disease, that's not the only reason I'm going to be last time, it's, I'm retiring at the end of the year. 11:59 PM, December 31st, I'll no longer be a judge.
Okay. All right, well, thank you, Judge Larson. I move to authorize the acceptance of grant funds from Washington State Administrative Office of the Courts and authorize the associated interagency agreement.
Second.
It's been a motion, a second, I think by everybody, by every member of this council. All those, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passed unanimously. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
And a big thank you to Judge Larson.
All right, and now we're on to council reports. It's the first council of the month, we'll start with position number one. Councilwoman Sephardosson?
Thank you, Mayor, and I have nothing to report.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman McDaniel?
Yeah, thank you. Actually, I've got two things to talk about tonight, actually, some questions. And my first one's actually about something the state did. So my comments are actually to state legislators on this one. Starting October 1st, I will now have to charge a sales tax, which I never had to do before. I found this to be an irritant. I thought it was interesting that they carved out the accountants and lawyers from having to charge this tax, but they nailed the IT and a few other people. Our state is not in a good position financially, and I do not believe this move they made is going to do anything good. My complaints to them, I think this is a failed move to increase the revenue stream for the city, excuse me, the state. My second part is actually a question. Earlier today, we had talked about the gun buyback, and my question was, how many guns were we able to get off the streets on that one?
Seventy firearms were turned in.
Nice. And the second part is, I was able to talk to a local residence about the budget and discuss it a little bit more, and one of the comments that came up was, during the budget cycle, we did ask for mental health to be added to the police department, and I'm curious to know if there's an update if we've hired that person or not.
That was never budgeted in the police department.
I guess I'll check in on that one then. That's all I have.
All right, thank you very much. Councilwoman Honda?
Thank you. So I was at the haircutting event, too. I got to volunteer for about two and a half, three hours, and it's my third year volunteering there for the haircut event. And it's interesting, the first year, we had more girls getting their hair cut, and so they need scissor cuts, and this year, we had more boys who needed clipper cuts. So we had a really long line for the clipper cuts and a really short line for the girls getting their hair cut. I thought that was interesting. But I'd like to thank Kristen and the Bella Red team and all the other salons that were there. They did an amazing job, and they took as much time as each child and each parent needed, because they weren't just cutting the child's hair, you know, the parent was pretty involved, too. So that was pretty awesome. The back-to-school shopping at the Tua Library, I used to run the clothing bank here for the PTSA in Federal Way, and I know how important clothes are for kids going back to school, and I would like to see that as a semi-annual event, because kids run out of clothes midway through the year when they grow, or they they just need new clothes. So I'd like to work with Amanda on that. The Kiwanis Club is having their 34th annual golf scramble this week. It's down in Auburn because the golf course here is being renovated. It starts at 7:30 for registration, you can go to kiwanis.com, or I could give you the address if you wanted to, to register, but any funds raised stay in the community and help our youth here in our community. And the Kiwanis Club is also starting working in the concession stand this week. We work in the concession stand at the Federal Way Memorial Stadium, so if you're at an event, come by and say hi. I'm usually making popcorn because I find that to be really fun. I did that in high school, so now I'm doing that as an old retired lady. But we would love to see you and come support the Kiwanis Club at the Memorial Stadium. And during the last three weeks, I've been pretty busy, but one of the things I did, I I attended the ADOPI Youth Cultural Event called Beauty and Our African Roots Celebration. I think it was the third year that they've done it, this celebration, it gets bigger every year, and it's an amazing organization that's helping the youth of African descent and African Americans here in the community work together, and they do a lot of volunteer work, they're very involved in our schools and the community. So next August, if you're around, I would encourage you to go watch the the program. They not only had food, but they had dancing, they had a fashion show, it was really interesting. I also had the opportunity to help a neighborhood out last week. There's a, one of our neighborhoods has a senior citizen, and she lived alone, she wasn't very healthy and was having a hard time. The neighbors had asked about 30 times for assistance to help this lady. And last Tuesday, when it was super, super hot, I was riding my bike through their neighborhood, and they asked if I would would stay. They were having adult protective services come again, and so I stayed, and they were able to, with the adult protective services, King County Fire and our Federal Way Police, they were able to get the lady out of the house the next day and into a hospital. But the reason I mention it is she's not unique in talking to adult, adult family services. They they go to a number of homes in Federal Way for this very same thing. So this lady was really lucky, she had neighbors who loved her and cared for her, and I would just ask anyone, if you know a senior that lives in your neighborhood that might not have family that come visit, or you don't see them out very often, to please check on them, because I believe very strongly that this neighborhood saved this lady's life. It was super hot out, she didn't have air conditioning, her windows weren't open, and she didn't have any water. And so I believe they saved her life because they cared, and I know that people in Federal Way are very caring, so I would just encourage people to reach out to those those folks who live near them that might not have someone, family that that are helping them. And one question, Mayor, is, I know last year we voted to become a pivotal partner with the Chamber of Commerce for 2025. I think we need to vote for 2026 to put money in to do that again, or maybe Steve could check on that?
We can check, I think we included for 26 as well.
Okay.
But we'll check.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilor Turner?
I have nothing, ma'am. Thank you.
Councilor Walsh?
I really have nothing. I I was also at the haircutting event, and I tried to haircut, and they said I was the wrong age.
Oh, microphone. Councilor Walsh, microphone. Take two. Can you say that again?
Yeah, I I was also at the haircutting event. It was great, great, kudos to all of the the people who are working there. I I thought I should get a haircut, too, but they said there were some problems besides the wrong age, they indicated there were some other problems as well with me getting a haircut. But anyway, well, we, we'll ignore those.
All right, exactly.
He provided free ice cream to everyone. It was awesome. Thank you.
Councilor, Debbie?
Yes, Mayor, I have nothing to report, but I did get some haircut advice from Councilmember Walsh tonight, so I'm going to follow through with it. Thank you.
Exactly. All right, Council President for your report.
Oh, thank you. Just the two thing, two other events this week, tomorrow, any of the chamber, if any of the council want to go there, is the chamber lunch tomorrow at 11:30 at the PAC. And then there will be one other ribbon cutting, we've got a lot of ribbon cuttings coming up. This one's at, it's called Cutter's Point Coffee at 1:00 and 3:48, and that'll be on Friday, in case anybody wants to go to that.
Very good. Okay, I'll be there. Okay, with that, great meeting, everyone, we are adjourned.